... time after time and I don't feel that over the many months, actually years, that we've been dealing with, that we have a, just a clear cut. Dave, you may, you may have some, trying to choose the right word here, but a point of contention, a point to hang your hat on. But it's the, how the conditional use permit is originally awarded. And then from that point, how you follow up on all of the things that Linda is talking about that we truly need to have covered.
My complaint is not the procedure. My complaint was when this fine gentleman here was the head of planning and zoning, he gave, they gave me a list in the form of a letter and said, "Do these six things and then bring it back to us." I did them six things, which are major. EAW took months, wetland delineation and all. I did them things they asked me to do. I brought it back in. I was handed 12 more things. I did those 12 things and then I hand that back in and said, "I'd like to get on the board." And I was handed another 18 more things. This is what you call moving, what we call in sports, is you keep moving the goalposts. They asked me what to do. He asked me, they sent me a letter. I did what they asked. What I'm saying is, is that they did what they asked and then they added 12 more. And the latest letter, and capital letters, was 18 more things. And I'm not, I want, if we have a fair deal and they tell me what I have to do, and for all EAW and the wetland and all that stuff, I did what they asked, I think then I should be able to be heard and not just keep adding.
No, we're doing exactly what I said in the past, that we don't want to do is get into debate during public.
Okay, that's fine.
And so we need to move on now, but somehow we have to find a way to get this issue to stop coming back in front of this council without getting a final resolution.
That's all I ask.
And Linda, I can work with you and see if we can have a sit down somehow, have someone from the county that would join us, the chair of the planning and zoning, to be there and finalize this because we do want economic development. But the economic development in this town has to be done according to correct procedure, county wise and city wise. Is that, is that cleared on?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Let's just cement in the goalposts.
Steve, you're kind of.
I was gonna say, in the end, you have to follow the ordinance and period. That's what should happen. And we may or may not have some procedural issues, but I'm way ahead of what I thought about asking another member of the planning and zoning board to go with me, just to meet with the county. They have their rules, but it would be just nice to see how, they're gonna tell us exactly that if we got all the ordinance and maybe there's some procedural things that look better here. You have to get all that information that is required and then you can.
Well, your depth of knowledge goes far beyond mine and a lot of others in this room here. So I think that that's what we have to do, but we need to have this issue put to bed and not keep coming back to it. So Steve, I think that, you know, the council is agreeable with that. I don't know that we need a motion or whatever.
Be happy to meet with some.
Send, yeah, send them.
If you work together and with Mr. Rose and get.
What I'd like to do is I would go meet with, I know all the planners that City of Los County, I would go talk to them and just explain this, what we're doing, is there something procedural we're doing wrong or not? You know, because oftentimes people make statements that, you know, and I don't know. And I've learned that you gotta go up to the source, you know, and ask them. But, you know, like I said, in the end, when anyone's looking to do something in the city of Tower or St. Louis County, wherever it is, they have to follow that ordinance to a T. And at some point, if the city council wanted to change something in that ordinance, that would require a whole new process of public hearing, blah, 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 so.
Kevin, Rachel, if you're in agreement, if we can do this by consensus, if Steve follows through on this matter and works with planning and zoning, and Mr. Rose to come to a resolution, is that it?
Tell you what I think.
Okay.
When they find out.
Okay.
I'd like to go with you when you go.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Because I've been with this project since the beginning.
Yeah, that would be good, or maybe I can get one of them to come up here.
Yeah, either way.
Yeah. I'll talk to them.
Well, with that many people, it would be good to get someone from, is it Loop or Virginia?
Virginia.
Virginia, okay. To come here.
I was forgetting, but I don't know, we'll try that today. Okay. I'm running on two cells, but.
Okay, any other public stand?
Quick ones. I just wondered, I also live out on Mill Point out there. I was just wondering if we could get that skid loader removed before vacation season starts. There's been a yellow skid loader out on the highway for, I don't know, four or five months.
For sale.
And then have a "for sale" sign on it?
Yeah.
Is there a number on it? It's mine, dude. It's on my property. What's with you?
Is it for sale or is it?
Sure, everything's for sale.
Oh, I just wondered if it needs, standing there, who is selling it?
I didn't know it was a problem having a skid loader on your property. I mean, is that something new now?
It's not a problem. I just wondered if it could be moved off the highway, that everybody comes up and sees it. But that's my small detail. The other question I had, I'm kind of new to town, is did Tower ever have a stop light or a stop sign before we stop on Main, Main Drive here?
No, no, and the, and the would never allow that, so. Yeah, because that was, that was talked about many years ago, so. They're trying to get away from something.
Let me ask, Dave, are you still out there? Dave, is there someplace else you can put the skid loader?
Yeah, I can, I, yeah, I can back it. It's on my property. It's for sale, you know. But I mean, I can sure move it if it's a problem.
And I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Matt Whistle.
Okay, Matt, Matt. So if he.
It's not on, it's on my property.
Okay, you just kind of like it outside.
I had it for sale there.
Anyone want to buy a skid loader? Okay, Jeff, did you have?
I do, thank you. Jeff Hill, 611 North Third Street, for the record. My concern is a safety concern up on my street and I'm sure Rachel goes by it all the time. The ice goes up on the corner there. I almost fell going up there. And it all happened mysteriously one afternoon. These three boulders showed up right in the 31 feet into the right of way. And I did try to file a complaint before, but it was difficult, it was not impossible to do. So I think the zoning administrator, the safety officer, whatever public works, needs to stop there and take a look at it and I'll show them the concerns and see how we can remedy that.
Jonathan, would you follow up on that?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, thanks a lot, Jeff. Okay, I bet we're just about done with public.
One more comment.
Okay.
You now have another, I believe, RV park. Somebody interested in, how many sites? Is it over 40?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight sites coming right out of the river in Harbor North. And it's the Ross family. They actually have a really nice spot for an RV park. And I advise everybody to go and take a look at that with them, or ask them if you can take a look at it. It has the most beautiful view of Lake Vermillion sunsets in the west. They could be set back, oh, I, you know, 100 yards. And they actually have trees and room for people to have RVs and actually enjoy their sights and have access to the lake. They would be able to walk down their road, go pick up their boat at the marina, rent a slip at the marina, go down the river. So if you're just gonna look at one RV, potentially a site, you better look at the other one too. They should also be involved in any kind of.
So they have come to planning and zoning?
Yeah.
And they are in the process, it is because of the closeness to the water, they are going to have to go through the exact same process as Mr. Rose. They are two different pieces of property, so they're affected. But the same state agencies, they will, they're gonna need an EAW because of the closeness that they are to the water. There will have to be a public hearing because it is also conditional use permit. They're two different locations, but I did, basically, they're gonna have to do the same exact thing. And they understand that and they got the same list from the city zoning administrator, which was comprised by engineers working with the state. So they are, they are aware of all that and they are working on it.
Yeah, I guess my, my big concern is that, okay, so now you're gonna have two RV parks right in a close vicinity. Which one would you rather have? I mean, do you really need to have that one that?
Well, that's not, that's not for us to say. If a person fulfills an application requirements, then our job is just to approve it or disapprove it on whether it fits the application. Not, we don't, because we don't like it, we don't get to say no.
But there is such a thing as having too many types of businesses.
That, that could come into play, but I mean, as far as, as far as. Right, it, it could, but I mean, that would be a, a public input. Planning and zoning has to follow the ordinance, like Steve said. So if somebody goes through all the proper procedures and it fits what's supposed to fit there, then planning and zoning would have to have a really good reason to say no, to either one of those, quite frankly.
But there is another study that would be generated because of that, because.
Possibly, yeah.
Close proximity of all this.
But that, we wouldn't decide that, I guess, like if your engineers or, yeah, other agencies decided that.
I'm way too polite. I hate to break people.
Well, I just, I didn't want her to think that she was.
You were, you, and Jonah, good, good question, you had good answers, but it's something that should be discussed in planning and zoning, so I appreciate that. I'll get better at going public in the future. Thank you very much for bearing with us. I think that we're done with public input now. And we'll move on to number four correspondence. It says none, so no correspondence. So under unfinished business, I had moved Harbor Platt up to 5.1 because I know that Jeremy is waiting. I've never used this thing before, but you want to give me some, is it just a dial?
You gotta press the little phone button first.
Yeah, hi Jeremy. I'm really glad you answered. I was getting a little worried there. We are at the point in the agenda now where we are going to discuss the Harbor Platt. And may I just mention that one of the reasons that this is on here and that we're concerned is that, although I don't have a copy of it and I haven't actually read the current development agreement, there is some sort of a go-no-go date of, in April for moving ahead with the Harbor project. And that's why we need to have the, an update on exactly where we are with the Harbor Platt. As I understand it, the developers of Tower Harbor Shores have been unable to move ahead because the plant isn't picked yet. Jason, are you the one to begin? We have Jason drop here from SEH.
SEH.
Okay, so I will leave this discussion to Jason, Jeremy and City Park.
Okay. So from my perspective, I mean, I'm really just wanting to understand an update on timing. I mean, when we had the schedule, the plant was supposed to be done, you know, initially back in November and it's been, you know, taken a while, so we've been sort of stuck in a holding pattern, waiting on that. I'm just wanting to understand the timing on it so we can see what needs to be done.
This is Jason. Update is similar to last meeting. The plat has been submitted back to St. Louis County, was done several weeks ago. I don't know the exact date. There were three things that still need to be provided for them to sign off on the plat. We anticipate that what they have now is, is appropriate for approval, but there's three documents. There's the vacation of the existing snowmobile trail easement along with the new easement that needed to be clarified with the DNR. There were lender letters that the city needs to receive. And then there was a, is it a verification from, which department was it?
Department of Administration.
Department of Administration on the changing of the city limits, correct Linda?
Okay.
As far as the first item, the DNR vacation easement, vacation of the old snowmobile easements and the new, the new location easements. All those documents were submitted back to the DNR in November and they acknowledged those documents and we're gonna put the legal transfer document together. We did a follow-up on that and they had not made any progress. Is that my understanding? So based upon our feedback from the DNR, they, there was a discussion, I think, with Mr. Bolt and then they were involved in that?
No.
But in order to speed up the process that we provided, because the DNR typically wants their specific language in these easements, and we've waited for months, we haven't received it, about having, we have the descriptions and the legal descriptions exhibits together, having the city attorney put this transfer document together for the city and the DNR to sign off on closing that loop. So we did submit all that information, once we realized that, to the attorney, Andy, last week. And Andy has it, but now Andy's on vacation. So that's where that document stands. And then Linda, can you provide an update on the other ones?
You have the other two more lender notices for the two loans, for the two properties that have loans and we should have those by the first, is what I've been promised. And then the same thing from the Department of Administration.
I wonder if we've been waiting for answers.
From the DNR since November, from the other parties just since, like a week ago, since they requested this last round of information, the county, I mean. In the meantime, nothing that we're working on would preclude the development group from working on their plat so that they are ready to submit to the county for that approval, submit ours as inked in. But what we're working on are the attachments and addendums, not anything to this plat.
Jeremy, can you comment? Is there anything that can be done from the, from your group's side that can speed up the process? I believe that there's a CIC overlay and there's the HOA that needs to be completed. What are your comments?
Our attorney has them essentially ready to go once we know the actual plat is approved. Will take her a few days, maybe less than a week, to actually get them ready for submission. But we're, you know, waiting for the approval to be able to take the next step. We've been in that same situation, you know, probably since, I don't know, sometime last year. I don't even want to venture what the guess would be, but what the exact time would be, but it was, you know, we haven't been able to change anything since then. The concern that I have, you know, from what I heard, obviously DNR essentially hasn't given any response, you know, at this point, and I understand that things take a while. But I don't hear any true timeline that's known as to when the plat will be approved. So that, you know, obviously causes us, the, you know, we're unable to move any farther forward until it's approved. And as it relates to the development agreement, I don't even know what to say in the way of an extension request because I don't know when the plat's gonna be approved. So that, you know, my overall comment would be, one, we need to extend the development agreement timeline. I forget what page it's on. You know, as it relates to the plat being approved, but I need to understand when the plat's approved so I could, you know, come back with how long it needs to be extended.
Aren't you subdividing the lots or, because the CIC overlay, you would have to have the exact legal descriptions of those buildings?
No, but yeah, but the legal descriptions are just unit, unit length of, and then the of is how you guys are recording your plat. Because if you, if you recall, we're submitting one building at a time in the CIC overlay, right? Because we're, because of the faith, you know, we're doing to make sure that there's no, you know, recording issues if, you know, for example, only one of the buildings has lived, getting built or something like that.
So the particular ask here is that we, you need a, well, actually, we in the city and you need to have an extension on that developers agreement?
Correct.
And what is a reasonable timeframe? Three months, six months?
Well, in general, I would say just flat six, but I'd like to know a better answer about the plat or we could relate it to within X month of when the plat's approved, if it needs to be that way. I just don't know that there's a good timeline of when the plat's actually gonna be approved. Because we've kind of heard that, you know, it was underway for a while now and it's, you know, still in the same situation essentially.
Okay. The, let me ask a, it's a related question, but it has to do with the infrastructure. There was IRRB money, Jason, that was allocated for, for infrastructure, for building number one, building number eight. That's the one that's on Pine Street. Do you know what the status is of that or?
We gave up that grant.
Pardon?
We gave up that grant for the rest of the building. We don't have any pending offers, applications or grants with the Act of RV right now.
Steve, if I can think back to the visit that you and I had to SEH shortly after we were sworn in. Do you recall?
We were working with some.
Yeah.
I don't know, because you're doing a reroute, the road reroute, something.
That's a totally different project.
Yeah, it's coming by or something.
Well, what Matt, what Matt Bolt said was that there was a $350,000 grant from the IRRB which was going to be used for the Pine Street, I think it's probably the Steel Pine Street there that cuts through, it rounds off that corner of the Iron Ore Bar property. And that part of that redevelopment of that rolling frontage was going to include putting in the infrastructure, in other words, water sewer for that building number one. That's why, that's why I'd asked my email if.
Matt's on vacation, so he couldn't be here. That's why he's not here. And there's no, we have no grant with IRRB.
Yeah, I'm a little confused on that. I can have Matt follow up on that as soon as he gets back, but I'm not aware of that. I wasn't in on your guys' meeting.
Yeah, L-Rip funding for a portion of that.
He said something to what, I don't know about grant, but I know.
You have an L-Rip grant for Pine Street.
Yeah.
For stuff within the right of way, but that's, you're talking about a different area. And so I'm not sure where the confusion is there.
Yeah, there is some controversy.
Jeremy, you heard what I just discussed. Have you had any discussions to that regard with, in that regard with Matt Bolt?
Oh, I heard a while, a while back that you think there is available funding out there for infrastructure. I don't know the status of what that is meant. I just, I got the feeling from him that there were some possible cases that there would be opportunities for that, but don't know if there, there's been any submissions or anything more than, you know, initial conversations or identification of what those might be.
Okay, it was quite clear that, that, that road work that was happening with the redirection of that road was going to use the IRRB money for the road relocation or redirection and that that would include putting in the infrastructure for building number one because building number one or building number eight, whichever you refer to, is right on that rule.
I'll have Matt follow up with an email on the conversation just to clarify. I think maybe there's some miscommunication in projects.
Yes, there is a sewer and water right there that goes out to the other building.
Yeah.
So I think that's what he's referring to. But anyway, we definitely have to have Matt.
It's not a problem, man. I mean, if I was, if I was there, I would, I would, I'm sure I'd rather recall it.
Okay, and then Jeremy, we're back with the issue of an extension again. Is that, again, I'm not aware of exactly what the provisions were in that new development agreement, but is there a hard date there that needs to be moved?
So there's an April 1 date of, hold on, let me pull it up here. There's a, there's a list of dates that we put together. We initially talked about these, and I believe it was November last year when we were figuring out timelines here. And it starts at April 1, which is, I'm trying to find it in here, sorry. Notice an intent receipt from the developer and then it goes, day one is the, they have to activate the fund secured and then it goes through construction dates and stuff like that. So what I would be saying is, as a date for now, I would just push each of those back six months, keep everything, the deltas between them the same, and the hurdles or whatever you want to call them the same, the, the, you know, actions that need to be completed by those times the same, and just push them all six months. The caveat there is, you know, again, assuming the plat can get approved here in short order, which I don't know that anyone can answer that until there's a conversation with, with DNR or a response from DNR.
Who are you dealing with there? Going or over Grand Avenue?
Okay, Steve Abernson is asking, you can speak up too.
So that's our Parks and Trails. I don't want to speak for, but that, would that be our Parks and Trails division?
Yeah, Joe Majoris has been our local contact on it, and then I don't remember the person from Grand Avenue.
And I believe, I don't want to say, but they thought the city was taking care of it because the city wanted this, what are you, what are you calling it?
They can get their number.
Yeah, so there must have been some miscommunication.
Yeah, it's a road modification that cuts around the.
The trail.
Yeah. So obviously. Obviously, there's a, there's a delay that's gone on and really haven't ascertained the reason for that. But it is not, as I can understand it, the developer. And so we need to have a resolution then because we are coming up on April 1 to do this extension. And I would entertain a motion.
To extend it six months?
Yes. Okay, Kevin, Kevin moves an extension to six months. Is there a second?
Support.
Okay, Rachel supports. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Okay, Jeremy, thank you very much. Do you have any other comments or questions?
No, that's all of it. Um, you know, Linda or, um, or Jason or, or when you take me talking that, just you can just give me some kind of background, if, when you get ahold of, of, uh, D N R, it's like, you put, you put pulse on that.
Yep.
And that's it. All righty.
Okay, thank you very much, Jeremy.
Yep.
Okay. And so then we have, um, the five point one, um, which, um, okay, now which one was it? We're actually going to read the, um, grievance.
No, this was the grievance policy that the committee submitted to the, um.
Okay, you want to take the grievance policy next? Okay, so, um, uh, it's the paper that's titled Actions to Deal with a Workplace Grievance. And, um, and this grievance, uh, policy was written by Linda or?
No, it was, uh, it was rewritten by me. There is no grievance policy. And, um, and it was given to the committee, um, we read through it, it was given to the city attorney. There, there's been no written grievance policy, so I'm not exactly sure what, how they were solving grievances in the past. Uh, but the city attorney agreed that it would be good to have a written steps of action for everybody to follow now and in the future, so that every grievance is treated exactly the same. And so that was, and so that was the point, that just coming up with a simple policy that just says this, these are the steps you should take.
And we need to do that. Um, the, uh, the additional issues with the grievance, uh, and, uh, and Steve, I'm sorry that it's, um, uh, you that, that, that's in this position right now, but, um, but the, uh, the whole issue was brought up, I think, uh, earlier by Mary, um, whether or not a department head that should be a citizen, uh, participant or a member of the grievance committee, uh, and certainly the chair, because, uh, it seems to me that that would bring up, um, conflicts of interest and, uh, and also issues of reluctance for an employee to bring a grievance, uh, if that person supervisor is heading that.
But it doesn't because see, so here's the deal, if, if everybody really wants transparency and the council wants transparency, then post the meetings of the grievance, committee meetings for this grievance, and you will see exactly what was being said and done. There isn't a conflict because none of the rest of the city employees, including myself, have access to this grievance process. And this was explained at the second grievance meeting at the beginning of the meeting. There seems to be a misunderstanding of what the grievance committee does. It is there only for the union contracted employees, one of which I am not, and neither are any of the employees that I supervise. In fact, I mean, this group, particular grievance is against the entire city council and particularly yourself. And you have two counselors sitting on that grievance committee. If you wanted to argue a conflict of interest, it would be that you have two members of the body that's being accused of something making a decision against themselves or for themselves, however you wish to look at it. So as a, as, as the citizen there, um, Linda Keith is actually the overseer of our all department heads. I am not her overseer, so I'm actually, I'm actually in a position where it's not a conflict of interest for me. I'm, I'm one way or another, based on the facts, a decision is made. And in either, in either regards, I'm actually making a decision against somebody that is above me in authority. It is the least conflict of interest that there could be, so I'm not really sure where people are getting this idea that is a conflict of interest.
If they, uh, if an E M T or a firefighter had a grievance, um, where did they take it?
So first they would take, go, take, go to the supervisor, which would be, well, first they, so if they wanted to talk to me, first they can. If they don't, they would go to Linda Keith, the city clerk treasurer, as the daily administrator of the city. If, if they're, if they can't resolve it by talking it out, then a written complaint is given to the employee relations committee. Same, same as any complaint from employees. There is where the difference lies. Once the employee relations committee, if they cannot settle it, if you're a union, if you're, if both of it goes to the council after the employee, employee relations committee, if they cannot settle it. But a grievance can be filed by the union contracted employees. So that takes it now into a sidestep, the grievance committee, but that is only for the union contracted employees. The regular employees, it goes to the council. If the council can't solve it, they can send it to mediation. If mediation can't solve it, you send it to arbitration, blah, blah, blah. So there's, there's, there's the divergence and the difference there. There is zero conflict of interest with me being on there. In fact, I have the least interest in it. I have the most to take, to lose by making decisions one way or another against people that are in authority above me.
So a couple of concerns, and nowhere in this grievance, in this process doesn't say policy. Um, it's not outlined as a policy, it says process. So I think there's room for that to be, you know, interpreted as, you know, that the policy couldn't be followed because is it more a guideline or a policy?
Well, there's nothing written that says we have to have step-by-step actions for the grievance committee. It just is even, you know, the city attorney advised it would be wise to do that, and you could make it the policy.
And is this modeled after another city's policy?
It is modeled, I didn't find any for cities. I went online and saw like what, what common grievance committee steps are. And this is the common steps of what you do, very bare, basic. It doesn't, it just says, you know, you talk to people, you listen to everybody's stories, you, you discuss it and make a decision, and then you, and then you decide if you're going to take any action. That's basically how it comes down to.
So, you know, I wonder in other cities is, you know, but I don't see here as a step where there's a recommendation made by the committee that's brought forward to the council in a council meeting.
Well, that's because in the contract, it doesn't say that. Their contract says that once it goes to the grievance committee, if the grievance committee does not reach a settlement, then it goes back to the council. The same way the employee relations committee, if they, if it's solved at that level, it never goes to the council. It's only if the employee relations committee does not solve it before that, then it goes to the council. If the co, if the employee relations committee can solve it, then it never has to go to the council. The, the idea is to not create a, 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 a situation where you create grievances. But their, their contract is not, it's very, it's very plain. It's, if it's solved at the grievance committee level, only if it's not solved at the grievance committee level is it then go back to the council. So, and what, and at the top you'll notice that it cannot, the, the, if rules change down the road, you cannot violate any state laws, contract laws, any of that. You still, you cannot, um, create a rule that circumvents somehow another rule.
And then under investigate the grievance, grievance, it states that the committee must notify any involved employees or employers. What about non-employees, you know, like I'm not an employee of the city?
Well, you're, you're, you're the employer and the grievances are, the grievance committees, here's only two types of grievances. Between an employee and employee or an employee and employer. It is only the employees that can file a actual grievance. And it would be against another employee or against the employer. In this case, the employer is the city of Tower. So outside, so those are the only parties involved in a grievance. It is a workplace-related issue, not a, not a, um, not a legal issue, you know, you, 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 if you, if, if, um, if you punched me in the face wrongfully or whatever, rightfully, whatever, um, that's a legal issue. Now, uh, now you could, now if I had the ability to file a grievance, I could say, you know, you violated my, you know, hostile workplace, whatever. But in the end, I can't do anything, the, the city can't do anything retribution-wise, like fine you for punching me in the face or send you to jail for, or write you a ticket. They can censure you, I mean, you know, like, it is, that part of it's a legal matter. This is just a technical, the grievances are a technical right or wrong. There's policies, there's laws, there's League of Minnesota, city guidelines. That's what you have to make your decisions on when a grievance comes.
And if you drafted, if you were acceptable to the wording, then we would come back and put the header on? That says City of Tower Grievance Policy with the logo and above that, to answer your first question.
I know it's not public input, but I know like grievance policy with the state, and if you've got a grievance against your, um, your supervisor, you have to go to a different level, you know, I mean, you cannot, you know, of course. Is that in your, is that with the, did they address that?
The, uh, well, initially, when you're, when you have a, say, a concern or complaint, according to city policies, you're supposed to first talk about that with that person, or you can talk to that person's supervisor. And so then. Right, but you could bring in a third supervisor. So, so say you had a problem between a.
I just was wondering if that was addressed in the.
No, because the grievance, that, the grievance, again, is, only comes into play if a contracted employee files that grievance. And the contract, their contract dictates what happens. And, and so does the city's policies. I mean, you have to have a grievance committee, that's required by law, blah, blah, blah. But, um, it is their contract that is dictating that this grievance be seen through by the grievance committee.
Okay. You checked with other, uh, other cities, you said, and there wasn't any other?
No, I didn't see any from any particular cities. These, these are not like complicated steps. They're literally just five simple steps. Though they didn't have a policy.
Where's the League of Cities?
Nope, the League didn't, nope, the League of Minnesota Cities, nobody has a, nobody had, that I found was like an official, because you're not actually, I couldn't find anywhere that says you're required to, and like, as I said, the.
I think at this point, I think what the council needs is, um, one more time to review this, to check with the league ourselves and see what's, what's out there, what's available. Um, and then has, um, has Mr. Peterson reviewed this? He's reviewed this document? And what, has he provided?
He handed him to him in the meeting and then he, he said it was very basic. It looked pretty straightforward. It was pretty boilerplate.
That, I would, because I did, I did, um, add the thing at the top on this because that was, uh, that was mentioned in the league, like you can't, and that's why I added it at the top about you can't, you know, you can't circumvent. So this exact version retyped should be sent to him, but if the five steps were exact, it's almost identical to what he was given before, but it should be sent this exact version.
Okay, so I'm, you know, I'd like, I'd like to move that table review of this policy, um, until we have further information from the league. Um, and then to reach out and see if we can get a couple of examples from other cities.
Um, is there support?
Do you want to hand it to Mr. Peterson?
Yes, please.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor for tabling this until our, the city, uh, looks at it and we do further review with, uh, other cities on the league? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, um, Steve, I think we were going to have you read your, um, uh, remedy of grievance.
Uh, no, you have that as five point four.
Public input?
Public input policy.
Uh, okay, public input policy, good. Um, might I ask, um, where, was this taken from the league?
Uh, it was taken from another city.
What city?
I don't know. I'll have to have a table record.
You read that? You read that? So the, uh, the, the, um, is this going to, um, um, is this going to require anyone with public input to, um, notify us beforehand if they have public input?
I believe that's what it says.
So the public agenda request form.
Isn't that, that separate from, from the public input or are the public comment? So this is a, a request for an item to be added to the agenda?
No, this isn't a, a request to speak.
It's not?
It's a request to speak.
Okay.
It's all with the document.
So anyone that is coming to the meeting that, uh, wants to speak in public input, uh, needs to fill out one of these beforehand.
Yes, and if they fill it out beforehand, then they could possibly get on the agenda, but if they showed up at the meeting, they fill one of these out, then we would know who spoke as well. So far it's been, some, you could have a string of, like, we don't know who they are.
Okay, uh, for, um, Kevin, Steve, and Rachel, do you feel like you've had enough time to?
I think, I think we're taking pauses, is my intention bringing up having a, a policy, um, is, you know, uh, other cities may use this, but I don't want it to be restrictive. I want it to be, and it help enable people to, um, bring input. Um, and so I'm, I'm not ready to do anything with this at this point, I guess. Um, I'd like to look into maybe a, um, because I don't want it to be, you have to do, you know, these five things before you can come in. I want it to be easy, but I want it to allow everybody there go and speaking. And I'm concerned that this may be a little restrictive to that or be a barrier instead of a help.
Uh, I'm, uh, in favor of having, um, uh, at least a week or two to review something before we actually. But you may have brought up some very good points. Are you going to recommend tabling?
Yeah, we'll have to table until.
Is there a second? Okay, uh, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, um, the remedy for grievance.
I think you're on five point three.
Then five point three.
My response.
My response, okay. Okay, um, now this is a response that I, I wrote and I've advised several times since March third. Um, I have taken my turn to take any, um, uh, public information out of this. It's, um, it's three, it's five pages long. I'll read it as quickly as I can. Um, but, um, uh, but it does address all of the issues that Kevin brought up on behalf of Steve, plus, um, the other things that, um, as you'll hear when I read this, um, I felt were very unclear. So, uh, it's to Kevin, uh, because his, um, memorandum was to me. And I'll copy it to the city council and I can pass these. So, uh, reasons for outside investigation, uh, Kevin, these reasons for outside investigation and main complaints currently in process are extremely vague and remarkable, remarkable for their lack of specificity, uh, I need some water. Instances, um, uh, and extraordinary innuendo and astonishing in your unrelenting obsession or fixation with trying to find a conflict of interest on my part regarding Tower Harbor Shores. Uh, regarding, uh, Tower Harbor Shores, last fall I went out of my way in visiting your office to show you budgets, cash flow, projections and our, our, ROI forecast showing that the project would generate at most an eight percent margin. Uh, further, I explain to you that, uh, the Tower Vision 2025 and Tower Harbor Shores, um, had a dedication for using the so-called triple bottom line, people plan to profit, uh, concepts to roll profits into new City of Tower development. Your possession of, your perception of, uh, conflict of interest is overreaching and correct. Uh, your continued leadership in typecasting the Tower Harbor Shores project team as greedy and making millions of dollars at city expense shows your unwillingness to accept the factual evidence of financial projections of the Tower Harbor Shores project. Therefore, in your memo below annotated with my replies and questions in italicized bold print require. Therefore, in your memo below annotated with my replies and questions in italicized bold print, require. Uh, require a more specific and thoughtful approach on your part before I can give you more specific answers. Quite specific, uh, anyway. Uh, furthermore, until I receive a more, uh, specific list of concerns. And eventually enter into potential discussions with a mediator, my answers will be somewhat brief and to the point. Requesting specificity when warranted and reserve specific evidence that show the invalid nature of allegations in your note. Uh, Orleans Preakston, March third, uh, two thousand and nineteen. Main complaints, uh, currently in process, and this first paragraph is, uh, from Kevin's notes. Number one, official complaint from Steve Altenberg related to comments made to Rachel and Brooke by Orland after election, but before seating. Which creates an adverse working relationship between the mayor and the fire chief and blunts director, which is problematic in looking at the city code of conduct, uh, slash ethics guidelines. My answer is that, uh, the complaint alleges that I used the word sexist in describing the behavior of the fire chief and blunts director. This is not a word that I would normally use and have no recollection of doing so. In the meeting cited in the complaint, I recall that I did mention that the city needs to have a no tolerance policy toward bias and gender or racial discrimination in city departments. At the time of that meeting, I was aware of complaints. Um, I have in, uh, red print here, the balance of this paragraph is removed since it addresses information for, uh, from one or more individuals who have expressed such concerns. Uh, but have asked for confidentiality and must come forward on their own accord. And, um, eight, I, I invite the person making the original allegation to tell me precisely the phrase that I used in the alleged defamation. Number two, from Kevin, performance review of Linda Keith and the resulting grievance as breach of contract on the part of Orland. Um, this was prompted solely by Orland, uh, of which none of the counselors had approved of an investigation to begin with. Which is problematic for several reasons, including improper use of authority issue. In parentheses, Tower is a weak mayor model. I'm gonna address that later on too. Uh, my answers, number one, the word investigation above should be replaced with due diligence. That is what this is. Uh, this was a fact, in, in fact, a performance review. The term proposed by City of Towers City Attorney, uh, Andrew Peterson. This was not discriminatory action. Um, in parentheses again, no other employees reviewed, since the per treasurer position is the only direct report to the city, uh, the Tower City Council. Um, number three, uh, one of the first tasks to be performed, and this is really the essence of this, but. Uh, one of the first tasks, uh, to be performed by either a sitting or newly elected mayor. Uh, each year is to suggest appointments to open positions in a committee slash commissions roster, the CCR. I began this work almost immediately using the CCR provided to me via email by the City Clerk Treasurer on November fourteenth. I immediately began finding discrepancies between the CCR provided to me by this clerk treasurer and the actual sitting committee, committee commission members. I did extensive research, becoming increasingly concerned by what appeared to be discrepancies of the assigned positions. And potential vol- voltifications of, uh, uh, an official city document. Having not met the city, uh, the Tower City Attorney and not fully aware of protocol and contact him, especially since I had not been sworn in as mayor. And concerned for my own legal position, I contacted an independent attorney for advice. His advice was to wait until I was officially sworn in as mayor, and then again request that the city clerk could provide the, uh, the, uh, CCR, the roster. Uh, to all council members. The CCR provided after the new council was seated was precisely the same as I received on November fourteen. That's when I realized that the newly seated, uh, council was expected to make decisions regarding important committee and commission assignments with faulty base information. And could not make appropriate appointments to the commissions and committees. To avoid complicity, to avoid complicity, uh, if in fact the altering of city, official city documents was occurring. It was my responsibility to bring this to the attention of the entire city council. Also, since I was officially sworn in as mayor of Tower, I had a duty to contact the public city attorney for advice in taking next steps in action. The outcome and results from this advice were the, uh, research packet that I provided to each of the council members. The city clerk treasurer, the union representative, and city attorney at the July twenty-eighth council meeting. And subsequent, but not completed, performance evaluation. Um, so B, again, from Kevin. Information from that meeting has apparently gotten to the public by some means in violation of the closed meeting. While unknown to us as, as to who that was, it lends argument to these issues being resolved independently. Uh, my answers, number one, allegations and insinuations have been made, not least, uh, from the, uh, clerk treasurer's union representative. That I provided information that was, uh, released and discussed in a closed meeting. Most notably that I provided information, reported, reporting information to the Timber J News. This has been denied by both the Timber J, J publisher editor and me. Without going into detail in an open report, I made it abundantly clear in my opening remarks at the Jan- January twenty-eighth closed meeting. That the research presented was entirely my own, and that research materials came from public city council minutes. Information provided me, uh, to me by the clerk treasurer, communication with affected individuals, and from published news media. One of which was in fact deeply involved in his own research, uh, begun earlier than my, than mine, and in some respects ahead of my own research. Similarities in reporting and, uh, in reports and reporting, mine and the news media are not surprising, as surprising. Given that all research material were from public records. Uh, Kevin, this is where you need to rethink and reconsider and understand what actually happened. At the, uh, number three, at the appropriate time, there will be witness testimony provided. That will show that the clerk treasurer disclosed information that occurred in that closed meeting to the general public. This information was relayed to me on the street by a Tower resident. Uh, Kevin goes on to say, related issues not formally documented yet, so this is very vague. Since these related issues, in quotes, uh, are not formally documented yet, I have been advised it is unnecessary to address them. However, for the sake of, uh, complete transparency and not to waste more city council time, I will make the following observations. Orland, um, number one, Orland committing to city funds without notifying the city or the clerk until after the fact, which is, as far as I know, against procedure. Uh, A, cost of a training session. Um, League of Minnesota Cities offers, uh, this is my answer. Uh, number one, League of Minnesota Cities, LMC, offers training traditionally offered to newly elected officials. Which should have been communicated to the two thousand and nineteen city council by the clerk treasurer. It was not. I was informed after the deadline by a former, uh, Tower clerk treasurer, uh, after the registration deadline had passed. I quickly registered and then informed the clerk treasurer and emailed the invoice, uh, the invoice, which could have been denied at that time by the clerk treasurer. However, I was informed that such registrations needed to be made by the clerk treasurer. Therefore, I requested the clerk treasurer to register both B and Counselor Steve Abramson for a second. Uh, League of Minnesota Cities conference at the state capitol. The first registration was an understandable, uh, quote, first infraction, but the second was stated correctly. Um, and then B from Kevin, uh, called Peterson. Uh, clearly, uh, my answer is I clearly, um, uh, and appropriately explained that in number two, A, point, um, I, I above. Number two, Orland making demands of city staff counselors as if in a strong mayor model, i.e. direct control of the city of, and city staff, which is incorrect. Tower is a weak mayor model city, and despite getting advice to that effect by multiple staff and, and counselors, uh, this has gone completely ignored. It has created an adversarial and hostile work environment, which is against city conduct ethics. Um, and I strongly disagree that, uh, I have, uh, caused any sort of adversarial and hostile work environment with the city. Um, my answer here is, uh, this is incredibly vague and needs to be more specific, and Kevin, you're gonna have to provide more specific instances. Uh, number three, Orland's conflict of interest regarding the harbor has still not been addressed despite Orland's claims. At the last knowledge, uh, available, the Harbor, uh, Shores office is still listed in Orland's shop, at Orland's shop. Which means that Shores is still paying rent to Orland's business, which is a financial connection and conflict. E, uh, and even if that information is out of date, the city conduct slash ethics mentions even a perceived conflict. Is still something we've acknowledged and abstained, abstained from participation in. Really doesn't make sense, but my answer here is that, um, this is addressed in my introductory remarks on page one, that's why that answer was so long. I have, uh, gone far beyond reasonable and required disclosure and divestiture of my involvement with Tower Harbor Shores. Uh, this has been done at great expense to me and my family. My only requirement for avoiding conflict of interest would have been to recuse myself from any vote pertaining to Tower Harbor Shores. Uh, however, I went a little far beyond that. Tower Harbor Shores has not been invoiced, or have they been paid rent, in Oracle North, um, doing business at, uh, Oak Mac Properties LLC since two thousand and seventeen. Uh, Tower Harbor Shores materials have since been removed from the office by the current, uh, Tower Harbor Shores administration. Uh, Kevin goes on to say, overall, uh, this creates a lot of ethical and procedural concerns. It makes it very difficult for the council alone to decide upon, uh, without an expert in city governance. Uh, that is independent of what is currently going on, to weigh in with sound advice on what is proper action. Uh, this is the reason that I recommended an outside party to examine the issue in detail and come back to the city with recommendations. So that, uh, no one single counselor is solely responsible for investigating or suggesting, uh, remediation going forward. So that the council can start, uh, to move forward. Uh, my main concern as the whole, uh, of all of these is that the mayor's actions are exposing the city to potential liability. For continually taking action on his own without the rest of the council, which to my understanding is not how we are supposed, supposed to be operating. Uh, this is why I also included item three above, even though it's not directly related to the two main complaints, uh, that have been filed already. It is potentially, uh, it is potential liability that needs a governance expert to weigh in on, that is not directly related to the city. It was initially my hope, uh, that the city attorney would fill that role. But, uh, it has been made clear that the city, uh, the city attorney intends not to get involved because of the current advice of nature of the council. Um, my answer to that is that, um, Kevin, you, uh, need to request clarification from the city attorney. Uh, I and others would benefit to know who made this clear. Uh, certainly not to my knowledge from the city attorney. And then Kevin goes on to say, the only reason that I've been involved in this, because as a member of the Employee Relations Committee, the initial complaint came to me. I looked into it just enough to confirm the complaint, at which point I tried to bring it to the council. Instead of wanting to bring it, instead of wanting to bring light to the issue in a closed session where I could agree to the council while protecting any potential private data. I instead was confronted with suspicion and hostile comments for trying to follow procedure as best I could, uh, in the circumstances. Um, you really need, this is my answer, um, I really need detail provided. There, that, that, that's, that's totally unclear to me, and, um, I have no idea what you're talking about. Kevin goes on to say, at this point, I would still like to make the same recommendation that I did before. That an independent governance expert look at these issues to write up a set of conclusions and remediations in order for the council to put this to bed and start moving on. I simply don't have any comment on that. Um, Kevin writes respectfully, Kevin Bitten, City Counselor. I write respectfully, Orland Preakston, Mayor, City of, of Orland. Um, the, um, uh, the, the allegation there, the only one is the one that, um, uh, that was originally brought, um.